Are there any agenda adjustments that we need to add on here?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just, if we do have time within the two-hour timeframe, I would ask that we actually get to hear a little bit from Linda Chappell. That was a very detailed pre-K report, and I did have a few, I think there were a lot of important things in there, if we do have time for that.
I know that she's thorough and she has the best time for her report. So, let me see what we can get here. Before we got the minutes.
Thank you, Chair Howerton. No, I am good with our agenda. Excited about the updates that we're going to share with you all today.
All right, we have approval of the minutes. We have our basis in 2023 minutes, but we got a motion.
So moved. Maybe we approve the minutes.
All of it approved. Next, I've got a DPS update on fire safety, and that you've had some attachments included. And we have Eric Johnson, firefighters, Officer Jason, firefighters, room change fire, and two teams talk us about these things.
Chair Olstead and Chair Howerton, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to present. My name is Larry Johnson. I'm the new Chief Operating Office for Durham Public Schools. I've been here for one month. It's been a great transition. It's been a great transition. I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of good people. Mr. Shepherd and myself had an opportunity to sit down and talk a little bit about some of the things that we need to be done in collaboration with each other. I'm one of those individuals that believe in working together. We all share the same goal as our children, to make sure that our staff continue to be safe. So, thank you for allowing this opportunity. I have with me our Senior Executive Director of Building Services, Mr. Fred Davis, and we're going to talk a little bit about what we plan to do in collaboration with Mr. Shepherd, funding to it, and then we'll take any questions after that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to provide a DPS Operational Services Life Safety Plan update. About a year ago, Mr. Shepherd identified life safety inspections and things that we must continue to do to ensure staff and students are safe and healthy. Those annual inspections consist of exit signs operating properly, fire alarms, fire hydrants, fire sprinklers, kitchen hoods, and backflow preventers. About a year ago, the Durham County Fire Marshal created a deficiency list with our annual inspections and broke it into these following categories, of which we have devised a plan to address and adhere to. Those are the firewall inspections, fire door inspections, fire damper repairs, and fire evacuation plans, as well as firewall repairs. We have put together a draft memo in constant dialogue with Chief Fire Marshal, Mr. Shepherd, to devise a three- to five-year plan that will address these deficiencies. We've organized this in a tiered approach, using elementary schools as our top priority, those without fire sprinkler systems being first. We've identified, working with our county fire, county finance, budget department, remaining funds from various funding sources, that we will prioritize to get this goal achieved. And so, here is some of the anticipated costs that we have projected and did public bids for to address the deficiencies that we have in Durham Public Schools. The firewall inspection, these inspections consist of going up into each school and addressing any firewall penetrations that are not up to code. The fire doors, these are fire doors that must be rated and must have appropriate signage on the fire doors. Our fire dampers must operate and must not have any penetrations or must be fire caulked. The fire evacuation maps need to be present in all classrooms, as well as in the front office, so that staff may identify egress and exits for all buildings. The firewall doors of repairs, we have a to-be-determined number. As we move forward on the inspections, we'll understand what that number is. We anticipate, based on our knowledge of costs, that will be around $2.5 million, which is a total of around $4.3 million. We also have some yearly life safety inspections, which we addressed in other slides, that's around $500,000 a year. This will be added to our annual budget as we continue to make sure students and staff are safe. And so, here's a list of funding sources that we've been graciously awarded by the county. We have, and again, these numbers, I know we have finance here, and so, these numbers still need to be rectified as we continue to pay down some completed projects, and so, this number could be a little less. However, this is our plan to address some of the immediate needs. And so, we have our 2016 Go Bonds, roughly about $1,006,000 that we have remaining. We will roll that into a life safety project that will address the needs that we mentioned earlier. The county and Durham Public Schools created a lobby to address additional life safety projects, as well as HVAC and miscellaneous capital projects. We will roll those up with those remaining funds into a life safety project as well to address those needs. We will work with the state and our lottery funds. We get about $2,005,000 a year. We will appropriate about $1,005,000 to address those other life safety needs. And so, again, that will give us a total of 4.2 with these remaining funds unencumbered. And so, if you look at the anticipated expense costs with what we have available funding, we currently have a shortfall around $2.6 million. Again, we will work with our county finance and budget office to identify other areas that we may address these needs. However, this was a three- to five-year plan. One of the things that the Fire Marshal did request that we start early is the evacuation plans, which we mentioned was around 1.7. We've identified that funding, and we will be bringing the recommendation to enter into contract with the responsible consultant that would handle that for us, and we will move accordingly in that manner. That leaves me with any questions that you may have. Thank you.
One, thank y'all for wanting to keep our kids safe. Thank you for the presentation. If you could go back to maybe about your second or third slide, I'll tell you when. Maybe I don't know when. Go back. Go back. It's the first chart with numbers on it. It's going to sound, okay, yeah, we can stop here. So, really quick, one, this is really thorough, this is going to sound random. I know that that 4.3 is missing the 2.5, right? Because that's the TBD. So, cool beans. Okay, so I got that much. The fire evacuation maps, I know you say you're going to prioritize like the elementary schools first, so those are, it's going to sound like a random question, but those are just the big maps that say this, you are here. Is that, yes, or they're like electrified and they're like on every floor? Is that what that is?
That's correct. However, I'll let Mr. Shepherd speak to the details. There are some other detailed information that he's requested on those maps.
Okay. I'm just, that was a curious question, but go ahead.
Good morning, elected officials, county manager, and my DPS school partners. The fire and evacuation plans actually...
I'm sorry, could you pull the mic up a little closer?
I'm sorry. Is it better? All right, sorry. The fire and evacuation plans are actually the document that all of the employees utilize in order to effectively get their children out and to manage an incident inside of that school. Our office has actually written that plan and provided it to the school. There are pieces that we actually can't do, which is the fire and evacuation maps, where you have to show your primary egress routes, fire lane access, fire hydrants, emergency assembly points, and firewalls within that facility. So, that's the type of information that's missing inside of that document that we created, and we're hoping that when we get those maps, we can enter those into that document and have a living document, so that each school has a site-specific plan that they're trained on and how to respond appropriately to an incident within that school. As an example, what we've done is taken our assembly spaces, such as our cafeterias, our gymnasiums, and our libraries, and we want to break those up into quadrants on a map, so when teachers sit there with their children, they'll know they can exit out of that space. So, it's basically a plan on how to manage the incident that's compliant with our codes, and we identified that the ones that existing in the school didn't meet the requirements of the code. You're welcome. I was just answering that question. I'm not the presenter. It was... No, ma'am, I'll take any questions.
I do just want to clarify. I only asked the question because Fred said on the side, "Do y'all have any questions?"
Commissioner Burns, were you finished with your questions?
Yes, I'm actually afraid to ask any at this point.
Okay. I just had a general, first a general question, just understanding what some of the terms mean. I think I can guess what a fire door is, but what does, what does it mean, what does fire damper mean, and what is, what is a firewall? I'm sorry to be ignorant, but I just don't...
That's a great question. Thank you for asking. Educational occupancies of our schools are built with life safety requirements such as firewalls, and that creates separation. So, as an example, if your school is non-sprinkled, all of the corridors inside of that facility are required to be rated as one hour. So, that whole wall that serves from that ceiling assembly to the floor, every door that serves it is where what we listed as fire doors. The HVAC AC systems above the ceiling that penetrate that wall will have a damper in it. And so, that damper, what it does is if there is a fire, the fusible link's going to melt and it's going to shut that shutter to separate that fire from wherever it's occurring, so it doesn't spread through the facility. We did above ceiling inspections, and we noticed that the firewalls have had penetrations, and you have to maintain the integrity of that wall, so it does its job in the event of a fire over the life of the facilities, which, you know, have some age on them. We noticed that there are holes that have busted in where pipe has been run, and, you know, there's work as technology changes, and they're putting cable through that facility. They would run, someone ran cables through the dampers, so the dampers actually can't perform the way they're supposed to. So, it's a lot of complex-type issues that we found. So, your firewalls that have fire doors that serves them, and they have fire dampers as part of that, so that's that whole life safety system.
That's really helpful. Thank you. And I guess my follow-up to this is, I guess, for you, Frederick, is moving forward and being proactive, are we, how will this impact, I mean, first of all, like, what are our current building standards when we build new schools? And then, as we move forward with the renovations, because, you know, we're going to be funding a lot of renovations, how do we, how are we going to take all of this into account?
Thank you for that question. Each building is, as Mr. Shepherd said, has its own unique code depending on when it was built. And so, in regards to future plans, when we renovate, we must bring it up to the newest code. And so, we ensure that all of these deficiencies will be met, and we will continue with the annual inspections to ensure that we don't have to go through this process again.
Okay, great. And I just want to say, I appreciate all of our staff working together. I looked over at Claudia when the mention was made of lobs, because, you know, this is where we all have to work together and come up with solutions, and I'm sure this is not something that was in your budget. So, I appreciate everyone creatively working together, because obviously, this is very, very important. And, you know, every time there's a disaster in the world, like we've just seen in Maui, it just always makes me think about, okay, how are we doing here? You know, do we have the things in place that we need? Because a lot of times, we see with these natural disasters, it's not just a natural disaster, it's, there are things that government was supposed to do that they didn't do, or things that didn't work that were supposed to have worked. So, I really appreciate everyone working together on this. Thank you.
Just to follow up on what I think you answered my question. My question was, do you bring in other schools? And you're working, that's pretty logical.
Yes, that's, we have a tiered approach, and so, majority of the older elementary schools will be the first on the list, because those are young children that probably don't follow the evac plans. And so, we make sure that we hit those priorities first, and then again, with the renovations of the elementary schools, ensuring that everything is up to code, and as we're doing with Northern and with Lyons Farm and with the others, new schools, putting in some of the requests that the current Fire Marshal was asking for.
Thank you, Mr. Davis and the team for this presentation, and Fire Marshal, it's been, really appreciate you coming and answering a lot of questions that we've had. With us working to get everything up to code, can you speak, Mr. Davis, just currently to what is happening now to make sure our students are safe? I want parents to also really be clear that while we're working to put things up to code, there are current plans in place to make sure, in the case of a fire, that students will be safe.
So, I will defer to Mr. The Fire Marshal as we have discussed what safety looks like. All our buildings have operable fire alarms that is a line of defense, and most of our buildings are built low bearing masonry, which allows for several hours that Mr. Shepherd was talking about, but I would defer the safety to Mr. Shepherd to speak more on that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. So, our position in the Fire Marshal Division has been to educate our school partners since day one, and as we do our existing building inspections through our DPS facilities, we spend an enormous amount of time with our principals and making sure they understand the responsibilities that they have actually as Fire Marshals within their schools to do fire inspections. So, we make sure that that educational component is really there, so that those on-the-boots members of the school system engage appropriately to do their basic fire inspections according to statute, which is to your exit doors and the life safety systems. Once we know that they are comfortable with that, and we do the inspection, we go through every, you know, item that we found in there, in hopes that they mitigate them. And so, those are the efforts that's what we're doing, and we hope that our school partners, which we've seen have taken responsibility in that and working hard to make sure that their facilities are safe with the education that we've given them.
And also, one of the things that will be expected from our administrative staff or principals would be, on the first day, to conduct drills and train our students to make sure they know how to respond in case there is an emergency as well. So, parents should be assured that administrative staff will work to make sure students understand what the processes are when there's an emergency.
Thank you all.
My apologies, one quick follow-up, and I think this one might actually be for Mr. Davis. And I hadn't said it, but one, congratulations on Northern. So, that's number one, for getting that knocked out and to everybody in here. But I noticed that this is a lot of construction, right? And we had an MWB event in here the other day, and I know that some of this is very niche. The plans, I know, will be technical, will be a specialized bid, but for some of these repairs, and this is very early to ask, but do you anticipate that we will be doing some form of outreach for some of our MWBs as we prepare to do like four or $5 million worth of repairs to our schools? And what the outreach might look like, and how can we be supportive in getting the word out? And again, I also recognize some of this is very niche, so firms might be few.
Thank you for that question. We are constantly working with the State Hub to identify a list of appropriate individuals that can do this work. As you mentioned before, this is specific, and there are some requirements to be specially certified in this, but access to information is always important to increase those minority numbers, and so, we're doing whatever we can to get people certified in this specific niche. This is a three- to five-year plan, and so, hopefully, we can show some numbers how we've kept kids and students' staff safe, as well as increased our minority participation.
And if I can add to that, we also now have our program manager on board, and that was one purpose, that we wanted to have our program manager to help us work with our schools in identifying those minority vendors to increase the participation.
That leads into my question. With having a project manager and a three- to five-year plan, knowing that we have 30 elementary schools and understanding saying that's going to be tier one, what could, what we need to do to expedite the three- to five years? When you say three- to five years, what's happening in year one, two? Will anything be at completion, or is it phased because of the particular scope of work? Or will all elementary schools be done by a certain time? And what can we do to speed up the process, if anything?
And I'll start, Mr. Davis, feel free to chime in. He will not cover the entire 30th elementary school, it would be 25 on the top of the list. But what we will do to expedite that is, I used to Davis mentioned earlier, we're going to try to identify additional, looking at, eight, nine projects that we need to complete. Mr. Davis has already started the process of that happening. Like you said, we bring this up to our board, just to make sure that we get that, as we're working with Mr. Shepherd, we're trying to identify things that, what I call the low bearing, we can knock out pretty quickly, get those things, you know, done enough. So, we'll begin to identify, I'm not a part, Mr. Davis working with Mr. Shepherd, we'll just keep identifying, in order to move 25 students, 30 students, hopefully get all of them in the first year.
Thank you.
Yes, so, the bottom line for the county and the school district, then, as far as like annual recurring expenses, is about a half a million dollars. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, just so, we need to be having that in our mind, right, as we go forward, as far as annual capital needs? Yep, got it. Thanks.
Our next idea is, we'll need to gather DPS to prepare, high-level overview, assistance you can send it out, specializer.
Thank you, Commissioner Howerton, and good morning, everyone. It is a joy indeed to be with you to share about the initiative that has been underway for four years. It is named Growing Together. I have with me Mr. Palmer. He has been a co-lead in this initiative under Operational Services. And if I may, Sheena Cooper out is our Senior Executive Director of Public Affairs. She has been an integral part of this work as well. But indeed, this has been intentional work over the last four years, and it launched as a result of our strategic plan. There was, there were goals in our plan that said that we wanted to evaluate our existing systems of our school boundaries, how children access those boundaries, and looking at how we balance programming. Over the course of four years, we have done extensive community engagement. This is not an initiative that has launched just through the administration, but indeed, in tight partnership with our board, we have been working collaborative with our community, our parents, our school, our school administrators to come to this point. And indeed, with four years of work, we're excited about the work that we'll be sharing with you today and where this will take Durham and our Durham Public Schools, as well as the Durham community in the coming years. So, today, in your packet is our presentation, and we're going to do... How's that? So, today, we're going to cover four big things. One is the overview. Secondly, we're going to launch into what this will look like now for our elementary programs, our elementary schools, and then branching into what will this then indeed look like for our secondary schools and the impacts overall that it'll have on our community. Let's start with the why. As we all know, if we've lived in Durham a number of years, I've lived here over 30 years, we've changed, and the joy that downtown is experiencing with growth and expansion is an exciting time for our community, as well as for our school district. But in 1992, if we reach back that far, that's when the city, Durham City Schools merged with Durham County Schools and caused and created Durham Public Schools. Why do I share that? It's because we really, as a district, have not approached this work in any kind of systematic deep dive around school boundaries, school assignment, in this sort of care since that time. There's been some tweaking and adjusting, but this is really our, an extensive look at what do our neighborhood schools look like, and do we reflect the diversity of those neighborhoods now? Many of our neighborhoods look quite different than what they did 30 years ago. And as we, as a district, looked at access, how are families accessing our specialized programs? Is it equitable? And we wanted to look deeply at what are the options and what are the offerings, and how do we increase that accessibility? We wanted to create equitable regions or access to schools by looking at comparable programming available to all families, and indeed, to relieve some of the overcrowding that many of our schools are now experiencing, and the contrary, or the contrasting part, some of our schools under-enrolled. So, as we look at the why, and the center of this very busy and exciting graphic slide shows our children and our families. This is the heart of this work, the heart of the board and the district and the administration's work. And if you just look and do a quick global look around the clock of those graphics, you can see some of the major initiative or area touchpoints that we really needed to address. Looking at how do we place children equitably in special programs, there was no systemic way of doing that. There were scatter across some specialized self-contained programs in some schools, and children that needed to access those programs needed to go to a different school over the years, so we've been trying to align that. We've been looking at the resource, access, equitable access to resources across all of our schools, and looking at growth and overcrowded. We've touched on that. And interesting, in the lower left, we have had a high interest in our application programs in the district or our magnet programs, but you can see the numbers of seats that we've had available, based on the numbers of schools offering those programs, has very much not kept up with... has very much not kept up with the interest or the demand. So we wanted to address that through this opportunity. And of course, accessing the schools had a lot, over 30 years, a lot of rules that created complexity for families and such that many of our bus rides were quite long. So this is a nice overview of the why that led us into this work. And so we're going to go into what does it mean for our boundaries? How did we manage geographic regions? What will it mean for our academic programs? The rules of student assignment, how families will get into our special programs? And of course, through Mr. Palmer's leadership and our operational team, the Capital Improvement Plan and its impact. So I started by sharing, we began asking our community and reaching out, looking at our data, looking at our magnet applications, looking at where the high-interest areas were, asking our families, what is it that you want to be offered through choice or options in our schools? And if you start at the top, we heard a lot from our families, interestingly enough, about languages, world languages, global languages. We are becoming an increasingly culturally diverse community, and we heard that reflected in our community outreach. We have international baccalaureate programs, but we also began to wonder as a team, how could we also expand language options for families? We'll come back to that in a little while. Our year-round calendar, high interest in applications. We knew we needed to explore how to expand year-round calendar options for our families. The Montessori elementary programs have extremely high volume of application interest and very few seats to honor that, so we lifted up Montessori. And I mentioned earlier, how did we keep the alignment of our special programs for our most, in some ways, most vulnerable families and children? For our exceptional children, such that pre-K into K5 could be stabilized and minimize transitions or changes that our children had to experience in order to reach those specialized programs. We are an arts community. We heard a lot from our families. They love our arts programming. They wanted us to continue that and strengthen it. And STEM is up there, isn't that interesting? Science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We heard a lot from our community. We heard, we're hearing a lot from our business partners, that we need workers and children that know how to problem solve. So STEM in the arts showed up here. And you're going to see that from this information, we began to glean and shape the Growing Together results. So here's the overview. We have established elementary regions. So you will see in a minute, there will be five regions geographically in which our schools are positioned that will have a more balanced socioeconomic and racial diversity that reflect the neighborhoods and the regions in which they serve, and of course, equitable access to pre-K programs. The boundaries have been adjusted, you can see, to manage the over and under-enrolled schools, to allow families to increase access. This was interesting, for magnet schools, many of our elementary schools can only be accessed through the lottery. A family, and we heard a lot from some of our magnet schools, I live down the street from this school, and my children could walk, but we can't get in because the only way in is through the lottery and a magnet application. We heard that, and now all of our application schools will have a boundary. Will have a neighborhood access, so the families closest will access, and then we'll also have, open up those access to additional families through application. And then we have simplified some of the rules, and then growing into increasing access and accessibility of the arts, global languages, and STEM. So that's the overview and the why. Now let's get into what does it look like at elementary? First of all, we took to heart what we heard from our families, that the arts, STEM, and global languages are important. And so on this next slide, you'll see the three columns of arts, global languages, and STEM. And the top row lifts up what will happen at elementary. And importantly, as you go down each column, you'll see how does it vertically align to what we're planning across the district K-12. So true to form, our elementary schools all will have visual and performing arts. But more, most importantly, we won't have art on a cart anymore. Those classes will occur in rooms that are designed for those programs. The global lang- yay, global languages. This is really provocative, and we're extremely proud of this. Global languages, beginning in kindergarten, every elementary child in every grade will experience world languages once a week, weekly, through exposure and instruction. What we know as we go down to middle and high school, that will position our middle school students to take advanced language classes because by the time that a child leaves fifth grade, having this global language exposure, they will be positioned to continue with languages and theoretically could take their high school language credits in middle school and then position them for extreme advanced languages if they wish. There is a North Carolina global language endorsement that we can place on high school diplomas. This will really position our children well, not only for that path, but as global citizens. And then finally, our science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. This should be in the fabric of everything we do and as we live our lives. Technology is now integrated firmly. What we will be doing there, we're working with our curriculum team to integrate STEM more intentionally into the core curriculum areas. What does it mean to do design thinking or problem solving in social studies or language arts? So that this way of thinking and way of processing information is done intentionally through elementary and positioning our children for advanced opportunities in middle and high school. So we're calling this Growing Great Schools Together for all of our elementaries. But now let's look at where these programs are positioned in our regions. So on our left, under 2223, this is also our 2324 boundaries. You'll see the elementary boundaries are outlined in red. If you glance over then to the right, you notice the elementary boundaries in all of this work around Growing Together will not begin until 2425. So the Board of Education worked with us, passed all of this, endorsed this in June, all of this work by June of 2023. And this is the year now we are in planning and implementation, training, making sure our schools are ready to launch in 2425. But on the right, you can see the new boundaries. And if you look carefully at the black lines, you can see the new regions, the new school boundaries and how they adjust themselves through this map. But on the next slide, you can see more intentionally in the north. Let me go back if I may to this point. The north, the northern region is mostly, there's a solid horizontal line. So we have a northern region, and then to the right, an eastern region, east. Following clockwise, you come to southeast with dark black lines. Continuing over, you see southwest region. And then if you look right in the middle, central region is outlined in black. So those are the five major regions. And on the next slide shows within those regions which schools are assigned. I'll just pause and let you look at that. What's important about these regions and under Mr. Palmer's leadership, working with this project team, we looked at school capacities. And as we assign schools within the region, the socioeconomic diversity that would be, that would be brought to the region and the racial diversity. And what we will do now in each of those regions is position application programs so that families geographically close to each of the regions will be able to access those specialized schools closer to their homes. They don't have to travel across the county. So where do the specialized programs go? So the International Baccalaureate Program, we will, you can see the IB program at the top. For the northern region, we're opening a new school, and that's going to be EK PO in 2425. It will offer international baccalaureate. And we're continuing Burton as an international baccalaureate program serving the southwest and southeast. YIB, well, I mentioned the language. But Burton has also been named a Blue Ribbon Lighthouse School of Excellence. It's been named a National School for Capturing Kids' Hearts. And with Magnet Schools of America, it's a national magnet school of distinction. We have high interest in IB programming in Durham. We have waiting lists for Burton, and this is an outstanding program we want to expand. And now we'll be offering it at PO. Montessori, high application needs. We're continuing the Montessori programs at Watts and Morehead, but we're opening a new Montessori program to serve families in the north and the east. And Little River will be transitioning to become a magnet program serving those families. Dual-language immersion, we will offer one in every region. So dual-language immersion in the north, central, and you can see, we'll have five. We currently already have three dual-language programs that are more grassroots. And those grassroots programs are at Bethesda and Lakewood and Southwest. Now you'll see Southwest listed in the Southwest region. We'll continue as a DLI program. And what's going to be important to note about that, the region will be able to apply to get into Southwest. But the board felt it important, and the superintendent directed, that the programs that began as grassroots continue to be able to do that as grassroots. So the families that are zoned for those schools will be able to access the dual-language immersion program, but the regional access will come through the Southwest option. It should also be important to note that for every school on here, although it is an application or magnet program, there has, there is a neighborhood zone for those children to attend, so they will be able to go there. And in the event a family may not choose for that program, there will be transfer options for them. That's more traditional. If you look at the bottom row of year-round, you'll see WG Pearson in every single region. Why is that? In order to create enough seats for the year-round demand, WG Pearson is centrally located. It will serve year-round families and will be open to all the district. So no restrictions on WG Pearson. So that's the most in-depth work of the Growing Together initiative. Then we started to look at secondary, what would we need to do there? Again, the map is similar in form. On the left is the current boundaries. And the middle, excuse me, the middle school adjustments and high school will not begin until 2526. Why is that? We don't need to change anything right now because we will be expanding year-round next year at elementary. There won't be an expansion need for any changes at middle or high school next year. So we will do that the following year in order to accommodate the greater demand. You can see in like form the changes, you can see the dark lines. And interestingly, on the right, if you look particularly in the pink zone, those black lines show the elementary schools that are within that middle school assignment. And that's true for each of the regions. All right. In order to accommodate our middle school programming in 2526, we will continue year-round schools. Rogers-Her will serve southeast, southwest, and central. And most interesting, for the School for Creative Studies, it will serve our north and our eastern regions as year-round. And the proposal that has been approved is for Creative Studies to transition to a 68 program, just middle school and not 612. We have not had tremendously high enrollment or demand for high school programming year-round. And so the recommendation was, in order to accommodate the large number of year-round elementaries that will be coming online, that Creative Studies could absorb that need and serve those families well in that placement. Going across the right, you see dual-language immersion. Our recommend, well, our approved school now is Brogdon Middle School. Will serve the county, our community. For families that choose to continue dual-language immersion in a middle school experience, Brogdon will be their assignment. Shepherd will continue as our International Baccalaureate Middle School. Our Montessori currently is just at Lakewood. But because we're bringing on more Montessori middle school seats, we need another middle school Montessori program, and that will be positioned at Lucas, nearby Little River, to serve the north and the eastern regions. Durham School of the Arts will continue its middle school 68 program and its 912 program. And of course, Ignite, we still have our Ignite Online programming. All of those you can see under the green bar show district-wide access. Now, high school, again, in like order, you can see on the left our current boundaries. If you look at the northern, look how deep into the central part of Durham, the northern region currently, northern boundary dips. Those make for extremely long bus rides for children and families and does not really create opportunities for families to be integrally engaged and connected and participate as easily as those that are more closely positioned. So you can see on the right the changes to the boundaries. And in the light shading, you can see some light gray shading on the right. You can see the areas of the communities that have been adjusted for the new boundaries. And again, secondary programs coming online in 2526. This is a great slide summarizing what the programming is for our high school. No tremendous changes there. However, we will be continuing the International Baccalaureate Program at Hillside. There are four options for early college programming through J.D. Clement, Middle College, City of Medicine, and Durham School of Technology. All of those schools offer credits for college credit. Families and children, well, students can earn the equivalency of an associate's degree or two years of college credit in addition to their high school diploma. This is becoming an increasingly enticing option for our families, and we are expanding and growing that. Durham School of the Arts will continue to be the 612. And we'll be leaning in and strengthening the Energy and Sustainability Program at Southern High School. Ignite Online will continue. And then you can see the CTE pathway programs. Those are all open to any family in Durham. You apply for the specialized program through the lottery, and the placement into those programs is assigned accordingly. So let's look at feeder patterns. What does this mean for families? We heard a lot about, from elementary in particular, families wanting to be able to stay with their elementary cohorts as children matriculate to middle and high school. And for the most part, we've really positioned the district to honor that request. It could play, this plan will position ourselves with feeder pa- feeder patterns that allow students to transition with their peer cohorts. You can see that Lucas, Lakewood, and Shepherd will transition. They'll both have an attendance zone and also application seats. And then there are a couple of schools up there that have asterisks. Those are ones that, schools that we had to split across. And you'll see that, for instance, Carrington is both positioned in the northern and the Riverside Zone, Attendance Zone. But what we've tried to do is protect the elementary cohorts, such that the families that went to Ina Valley and Carrington then would stay at the northern assignment. So we've tried to honor feeder patterns, honor family requests, and streamline all of the pieces around equitable access. So, do you have all that memorized? If you don't, on our website, and there's the, there's the link. But if you look at the top, right now, this graphic shows in the middle, it's brighter, the proposed middle school boundaries link. But if you go to the left or to the right, you can highlight elementary school boundaries. And you click that on, you type in your address, and every school option will come up for you. It will show you what your elementary is, what your base, your neighborhood, so to speak, your neighborhood assignment, your regional option for IB, for DLI, for Montessori, for year-round. So families will be, hopefully, this will be very helpful and user-friendly at a glance. And again, you can see the link for elementary, for middle, and for high. What are our impacts? Well, we are excited that we have really managed to lift up the diversity and the cultural richness of our community. We've offered, this will offer us demographic balance, neighborhood access to schools, increased numbers of application seats, shorter bus ride times. We have done tremendous work and will continue to be looking at aligning our resources at schools and our boundary programs and planning for all of this growth that our community and as commissioners know all too well. So we started because of our strategic plan, or aligned to our strategic plan. And now we grow into the new strategic plan that's launched July 1st. This work now becomes implementation of the Growing Together initiative, building our future as a community, honoring what's happening across our community, and trying very hard as a district to embrace that growth and offer really high-quality and outstanding programming. I do want, if I may, explain this graphic. Our Public Affairs Office, Tony Cunningham, want to give him credit. But this graphic in the center is quite intentional, and I'm going to try to do it justice. But the sun, if you look at the sun, the sun ignites the limitless potential within each student sparking transformation that radiates throughout Durham. We are a growing community. You can see the skyline of Durham and the reflection that we are under construction as a city and as a school district. We have many new schools opening, and Northern High School being the most, the one coming online. DSA is under development in Murray Massenberg. There's exciting things happening here. And then finally... And then finally, the spark, the Durham Public Schools' spark under the city lays the foundation as a seed to foster the growth and flourish a vibrant community and a vibrant school district. So that is Growing Together overview. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Madam Chair, County Commissioners, as well as our board members. Thank you to our manager as well and staff. I think this is really a robust plan that is going to address equity, which means access. We're trying to level the playing field for every student that comes to DPS. The good thing for County Commissioners as well as manager, this plan is not going to cost you a penny. So we are, we are really excited that we're able to pull our existing resources. We are appropriating them so that we'll be able to meet the demand of this new change. And again, I want to acknowledge the $18 million that we're able to get from McKinney Scott. That's what will help us to be able to fund some of these initiatives. It's going to cost us a lot of money when it comes to transportation because we have to legacy some students on 24, 25, and which is going to require us to bring probably about 50 more bus drivers. That's costly. We are absorbing that with our $18 million. Not only that, we have to train our teachers with all these programs. We're adding about close to 25 additional positions to make sure that we have access across this district. So I really wanted to lift this up. It's costly, but we're able to be strategic to readjust our budget as well as the $18 million has been able to really to help us to have this in motion. So 24, 25, that's where we're going to feel the change of this. And now, all I can say for our citizen, our intent are really pure. We really want to make sure that's access for all. Those who feel like the change is not going to help their families, I'm begging them to stay with us. It's going to be good for everybody. So thank you to County Commissioners. Who could not be possible to make this happen with the support of funding, to be able to build additional seat on our campuses? So thank you so much. That's pretty much my comments. I'm really excited as we're going to roll this out on 24, 25. This new academic year, just a transition year, to make sure that everybody's trained. We bring all the resources possible so that 24, 25 will be ready. So that's my comment.
Thank you so much. Anything for you, Mr. Palmer? No. Dr. Pittman, do you want to go back to one, I think it was in the beginning of your presentation, and you talked about the schools would be available for the people living closest to that particular school? So my, so my, my question was and concern was, how is that going to stay diverse? Because, you know, schools, in the past, when we had schools that were in a particular community, they were either all white or all black. Because what lives around in the community are usually people that practice the same type of cul, or the same called culture. And that kind of popped up for me.
Yeah.
If it's a school that primarily African-Americans or people of color live near, will the school end up being primarily people of color? And or, for right person, will it be primarily white folks?
That's an excellent question, and it is one Mr. Palmer and our project team grappled with in detail. One of the beauties of an application school honoring the request of families to access their neighborhood, it also, though, is accessible, about half the seats, we think, of what we've protected for the neighborhood, and that's how we've shaped the boundary. The rest of those seats would be accessed through lottery in, from that region. And we could monitor and control for ensuring the racial and S E S balance, socioeconomic balance within each school through that means, through lottery control. I don't know if you want to weigh in or be more detailed?
I might add a few words just to broaden the scope and share how it into your inquiry earlier. If I wanted to share anything, at a national level right now, urban education is going through a moment. The intentionality of this plan goes all the way to, at which schools do we place application programs? And at a high level, what is the purpose of what we used to call magnet programs or application programs? Yes, school choice, we know, is in vogue in the year 2023. But even more than that, this all came out of voluntary desegregation back in the 90s. So we've leaned back into that. If you look at the new application program placements that we've proposed and that have been approved, and I think Dr. Pittman would be helpful to reset. For example, as we look at the International Baccalaureate Program, and actually, the feeder patterns would be fine. Just giving consideration, for example, to Shepherd. The neighborhood access to Shepherd that you see there commensurate with Fayetteville Street, Burton, and Orin Harris, those students live oftentimes within a half-mile of one of our best middle schools at Shepherd Middle School. However, prior to Growing Together, they were on a 10-mile bus ride to Lowe's Grove, which was our most concentrated poverty school in southern Durham. But the kids were coming from McDougal Terrace. That's an example. Now, by having the application program at Shepherd that is fed through Burton and those neighborhood schools, but also, and the quick pulse check from our County Commissioners, what's the other I B elementary school? Is E K Poe. So now we're being intentional about aligning feeder patterns at the elementary level and using the opportunity to have the programs come together. But also that when we place those application programs, students that live nearest them can access them by right. And we use the lottery for our purposes of not just voluntary desegregation, but intentional school integration. There are hard legal confines of what we can do with race and ethnicity for admission. We've brought it down to the neighborhood planning level, about 980 neighborhood blocks across Durham County, recognizing the socioeconomic and racial compositions and the, how close they are to those schools. The new schools we brought online, we've been very intentional about trying to use neighborhood access in conjunction with the lottery. Overall profile of the school is more diverse, while also recognizing the legacy and history, particularly from a central Durham perspective, our historic city schools. And so we're able to do both with this proposal. It is with a lot of forethought. So if a, if a family lives in the Shepherd boundary, they would not have to apply. They could walk in the door. That's right. We have a balance of seats for walk-in and application. How does it currently function?
Not very different than our process now. Some students are assigned, and then some students have, families have to apply for some of the application programs.
One of the challenge points that we observed was that sometimes the application can be onerous. And you have to be very proactive in that application, sometimes up to nine months in advance. So for example, with Lakewood or Shepherd, by balancing that out, we are trying to make sure that folks that live nearest those schools have the easiest access to attend. And then using the lottery to bring additional diversity to the school.
I would, going forward, I'd really appreciate us being very sensitive and touch with what happens with that. Normally, because I, I just kind of have a little anxiety about the schools becoming more poverty written in certain communities. And folks that can have the access to more resources going someplace else. So that's, that's my angst right now around that. And I know that you've got a lot more work going on with that.
Chair, all right. And I think the intent for this work is pretty much to balance that. I think it took 30 years to get to this point. Our board knows that this work is going to be continuous. Every two or three years, we'll come back. As Durham's growing, we're going to continue making adjustment.
And I think it's important, you know, we can put a lot of boundaries and applications and rules in place, but we also need folks to be champion of our public schools. And part of, you know, why we want to have this presentation with you all, so that when you're talking to your community members, you can say, hey, here is what the public schools is offering. This is what we're working towards. Because when humans have to interact with our plan, and humans make, you know, different decisions around plans. But how can we really champion what we're doing, share the story of what's going on so that families are aware?
And always remember that when I ask the question, it's not about anything negative. It's about that we are able to say those policies out there. So I can get my questions answered, then I can say what's in my heart to say in support of DPS.
A hundred percent.
But if I don't ask the questions and get the answers, then I got this noise going into my head that I'm, I don't have the right answer. So I ask the questions because I want to know.
And we are happy to answer, so ask as many, yes.
If I didn't care, I wouldn't ask the question.
Commissioner Long.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I have what may be a silly question, but I would just, as also a new parent, looking at, as you were describing the different programs, you were like dual-language immersion. I was like, oh, I like that. And then you were talking about I B. I was like, oh, I like that too. Is there, is there a plan or is there even like a model across the country that encompasses all of these programs? Or is there like a goal of DPS to reach the point of like having schools that have dual immersion, Montessori, arts, I B, all in one entity?
Let me see if I can answer this in this way. So the International Baccalaureate is very distinct from what a Montessori program would offer, which is very distinct from what a dual-language immersion. So dual-language immersion is where a student in kindergarten will walk into their kindergarten class, and 90% of what that teacher speaks will be in the global language, the world language. The child will get 10%. And then that, that, that ratio adjusts through the years. Whereas a Montessori is a way of learning and a way of, of growing. So these are very distinct and different. So if I understand your question, would there be an aggregate conglomerate of richness of all of it in one? Not on the radar right now. But, and, and really, families that we historically are really seeking a Montessori experience are very familiar with it and, and want it in its purity. Our commitment there is to make sure that every offering that we're providing that is specialized, our teachers are extremely well-trained, prepare, go through the national training or professional learning experiences. And when, on day one of 2024, our families are walking into highly qualified programming is true to the, the mission that is there. To your point, though, around the arts and science, technology, and even some of the global language experiences, that will be a more integrated opportunity for families that will be in every elementary school. So this is what all of our elementary schools will be about, the STEM, arts, curriculum integration, integration. But then on the other side of the wheel, those are more specialized, unique, and very distinct in, in the school in which they reside.
Does that help? Yeah, that's very helpful.
Okay.
And my second question was kind of along the lines of Chair Howardton's. With the applications to the specialized school, so if, say, somebody applies and is accepted into a Montessori elementary school?
Okay. Here, let me show you. Maybe this will help, or that, let's, let's do that.
Yeah. Will they have to then, their family, apply again for the next, for the middle school? Or will they be automatically grandfathered in to keep moving in that pipeline?
Sure. So at this point, our current process is, once a student is placed into their elementary program, that is secure throughout their elementary experience. What we've learned is that as children start to grow, their interests start to change. And what we don't want to do is, we want to keep options open to families. And typically, we would want a family to reapply with intentionality if they wanted to continue at the middle school with DLI or Montessori. What we can control for is prioritizing those placements for families that have had those experiences and wish to continue. We can manage that through the lottery prioritization. And the region we don't automatically commit is because demand and numbers of seats have to align. But our commitment to our families is to prioritize their seat.
Thank you. Well, this is so exciting to get this presentation. I've had heard bits and pieces, but really appreciate this. And Deb, you know, we go way back. Just thinking about the fact that our schools integrated in 1992. I became, first became a Durham Public School parent in 1997 at Forest View. And that's where Deb and I actually worked together on different site-based committees and principal search committees. So, yeah, when I was a parent. So, and, and really was hitting me that that was only five years, as I sat here thinking about it, five years when our schools had integrated. And so I think this is just a huge milestone. By the time this gets implemented, it will be about 30 years since the schools were first integrated. And so I, you know, I really applaud you all. This was a huge undertaking to try to balance all of these things, all of the different goals, and address all the, just address everything that needed to be addressed. I mean, it's just, wow, I can't even imagine. So I, I just want to say, I'm really excited to see how it plays out. I was just listening to an NPR story yesterday about, I don't know if anyone else heard this, maybe around 2:30, about the Indianapolis school system hiring a marketing firm. It was, I felt like they were talking about Durham. They were talking about how in Indianapolis, they've lost about 2,000 kids since the pandemic to vouchers, to private schools, charter schools, homeschoolers. And they hired a marketing firm. And they were like, you know, it's, this is the marketplace now. We have to sell our school system. And evidently, I, I don't remember how successful it's been, but it just came to mind thinking about launching this. And I, I hope that you all will think about that because that's the day, that's what we're in now. I mean, especially what we're up against with the General Assembly that's coming down the line, that I'm 100% convinced that no matter what, our schools are going to be better than what is offered through vouchers. But we have to make sure that the public knows the difference and understands the difference and understands what they're going to get from sending their kids to Durham Public Schools and being, being a part of all of these offerings. So, so I just want to throw that out there. I do have a few, first of all, the language issue. I mean, that, that's not just about parent choice. That's actually based in brain development. We know that children, we need to be learning languages in elementary school and how it will help with everything else. So I think some of these things, to me, are not just because this is what parents want. It's actually because they're evidence-based. And same thing with the arts. These are all academically, we know that it carries over to all types of learning and also engagement and social skills and, and keeping kids wanting to come to school. You know, you hear all the time, why do you come to school? Because I, because of my theater class, because of chorus, because of band, because of the sports. So I, I think it's important that we also talk about those things that it's not just because this is what parents want, but also because this is educationally sound. And related to the STEM, I just want to really put a pin on that because... because just approved $3 million last night for funding for workforce development. That is, these are, this is our BULLS initiative. This is, you know, what we're funding to link together Durham Public Schools, Durham Tech and the Bio, BioPharma, Life Science, and also starting a new sector. We're going to be starting a new pathway. We also funded 250,000 last night, I think it may be 25,000 for made in Durham. Again, they're, they're totally integrated. But this is just to say that I hope that we can also be very intentional about looking at the jobs that we have. When I looked at the CTE pathways, I, I think it's important, and I don't know how this would fit in, but that we have, you know, a life science, you know, pathway specifically. And then whatever the new industry pipeline is that we're going to be starting with the BULLS initiative. Because the biowork certification that we're people, you know, that's, that young people are now getting with the BULLS initiative, which you all are partnering with us on that, that is setting students up for, you know, getting jobs at good-paying jobs that start 50,000 a year and have the room to move up. We just had one of the model, he's going to be one of the ambassadors. He actually did not graduate high school. He dropped out from Durham Public Schools, but he was able to get the biowork certification. And now he's working at Biogen and can support his, his family. He has a young child. So I, I do hope that, I noticed with the STEM, you know, there was a reference when there were those different, you showed us those different areas of focus in the beginning, mentioning that STEM is middle and, and high school. But I hope that we can also not just say STEM, but like STEM CTE and that we're, we're really exposing our families and our children to the opportunities of the types of jobs that we have. Because this is what we're trying to fund on our end. So I, I will stop there and would love any, any thoughts or responses to that.
Let me quickly react to Commissioner Jacobs. First of all, I think what you said about Indianapolis Public Schools, we are pretty much on the same boat. We just hire a marketing director and we're trying really to beef up that department to make sure that they'll be telling our story to our community. So that's number one. So we are really proactive when it comes to that. When it comes to partnership with Durham Tech and making sure that our graduate are really going through that pipeline to be the workforce for Durham. So we have initiative with Durham Tech to make sure that 25% of our graduates, they'll be graduating with either associate degree or some kind of certifications. That's a work that is really in motion and we are really excited about it. We are very methodical, intentional when it comes to what kind of certification that they're going to have. And there are more also to come in the future that Durham Tech as well as DPS will come and present in front of county commission to tell you how we're moving with that particular initiative. We are really excited that there are a lot of jobs that are coming to, to the Triangle area. We really want to make sure that 1,800 graduates that we're graduating every year, they're having that opportunity as well. So we are on that and there are other initiative that grants that we are also working with Duke as well as Durham Tech. That's something that we'll be able to share in the future, how to really increase that pipeline for workforce.
I was sitting here requesting on, I have two sons that graduated from Jordan High School. And one of them was playing basketball in Danville, Virginia. He's playing basketball in Danville, Virginia, and he got more excited about the girls than he, than he was about the, the studies. So you know what happened? He flunked out and he moved to Durham and went to Jordan. And the, the teachers and the counselors got with him and he graduated and went on to A&amp;T and got his, graduated from A&amp;T. So I have good feelings about how he was embraced in that because students that fail at another school and then try to get themselves back up, like sometimes it's difficult. And I wish that all of this stuff that's happening right now had been there for him at that time. But he did, he did well. He did well. He's doing well this morning. I was just talking to him. And so DPS does a good job.
And I have something else I'll mention in a few minutes. I want to give Commissioner Burns an opportunity to speak and then something else.
I'm so happy y'all getting this on tape. This probably doesn't happen often and, and I don't know who this is going to offend, but this is the most encouraged I've ever been in any meeting with y'all in my life. And that's not sitting here that is actually being in Durham for 20 years and watching Mayor Elaine O'Neal come down there and fight and Bill Bell fight and Larry Hall and Jackie Wagstaff and Michelle Cotton-Lawes come down there and fight because of these doggone segregated schools. 20 years and 30 years ago, you know, a decision was made to do the right thing. And then a couple of months ago, I wish I could say every board member voted in affirmative. Everybody didn't. But the folks sitting around this table did. I feel like every slide that you gave could have been its own presentation. It really seriously could have. I feel like the media has done a disservice to you all because they went to every pissed off parent they could find to make this plan out to be something that it's not. And Dr. Pittman, I don't go back with you as long as Wendy does. And I was getting some water, sir. Could you tell me your name again?
Matthew Palmer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palmer. What, you said, and I got, I actually am going to go back and look at it and quote it. It was about, I got it when, as soon as I saw this presentation, like I got it. I get the 50%, like this is your neighborhood school. I know how many kids, I, I'm in the schools, I sit with parents, I know Javania sits with parents. We know how ticked off they are that their kids are getting bust all the way across town. They get off work, they can't get to these meetings. The intentionality of this plan like legitimately warms my heart. I remember when Mayor O'Neal came and spoke to y'all during COVID. It was me and a bunch of other people sitting in my office and I legitimately like broke down and cried when she got done. Because I honestly thought, I was like, I swear to God, I don't think some of these folks get it. Like this is what parents want. If this plan was a food, it would be the everything bagel. Like I don't know how you, like I, I personally think so. It looks like, and people, well, if you put cheese on it, like I don't. But I, this is by far the most encouraged. I, I do not like, I, I'm a, y'all, I've been hurt by some of the language I've heard in school board meetings. I have been broken down. I have not been able to encourage parents. I'd feel very different today. I feel very different today. My spirit feels, if this, if, if I, I don't know what's going to happen. If y'all run me out of here, I get hit by a bus tomorrow. I would be able to say, well, doggone it, we took a step in the right direction. And I say all that to say, I'm not going to jump on the marketing part. I'm happy that Wendy got to bring up some of that. The reason why it's so important, I don't know, we know about these opportunity vouchers. I was at three churches this weekend doing, you know, my rounds, meeting the people. And one of the things that I saw, two of the churches had private schools. Do you know what they had made? Their own flyers for the opportunity vouchers. They, and they're not the only ones. They are parent, they're, they're churches right now because black parents are fed up. This is a step in the right direction and we need to make sure that people know that we are taking these steps. So I pulled the numbers and I, I put these numbers out not too long ago. I did not, it's not exact science, but the governor has it on his website. In Durham, two opportunity scholar vouchers, let's not even call them a scholarship, we're going to lose $6.4 million by 2026. It would, we will have approximately 945 students to go to private school utilizing these vouchers to 2,612 students. That is what they project. So from 945 to 2,612. And we all know that there is zero evidence that kids that utilize these vouchers do better in these private schools than they do in Durham Public Schools. So I want to make sure that folks know that they can get a decent, good education in Durham Public. And I just, I feel like whatever y'all, if y'all got to send out a video, if we got to be the ones to do it, each, defeat a one mainly, and I'm, I'll jump back on that one. I know how many parents wish their kids could just go right up the street where they were. Like I got it. I know I've been upset about the application program. And here it is, you're saying 50% for neighborhood and then you're going to open it. Like this is the most equitable way to do it. And then you say you're doing it within the confines of the law. And, and I, I wish, I wish I had a videotape to go back and I'm going to stop here because you said it was almost like righting the wrongs. This is intentional integration. Brother, it was just so profound that one little sentence that you had. And I hope y'all tattoo that and let these black parents know because they are turning the corner and this might be the one thing that turns them around. So thank you, thank you. Thank you, Doc. Thank you for the leadership of the board. But this is, this is what black parents have been asking for. It took 30 years and I hope y'all can get them to look back at Durham Public Schools and say, this is where I want my kid to go.
Mr. Bennett.
My quick reaction, just want to say thank you to Commissioner Burns for the word of compliments. This has been work in the last three or four years. So we started from scratch. We did it really methodically to make sure that we don't really upset a lot of folks along the way. But we landed in a good place. Now implementation, that's where it's going to take a lot of efforts, not only in our public affairs, but the entire community to tell those good stories. I'll say this, as our track numbers of students leaving us going to private or charter schools, they come back to us at a high school because they know we finished strong, we have best programs and our students are going to places. About a month ago, I had a good conversation with one of the provost at Duke University, telling me stories about how he had two students, two of his kids went to Riverside High School. They end up at Yale and then another one Harvard University. We have great stories, but it's going to take all of us to be able to share those stories. I heard a lot from our parents complaining a little bit about middle school in the past. That's why we're doing this work. We really want to make sure that all this foundation work, exploration work is going to be in the middle school to get those students ready before they go to the high school. So we need everybody to be ambassadors of our public schools. The most equalizer for all of us, if we are all sitting here because of public schools, it's going to take all of us. And voucher, those are really conversation that we all know that's going to destroy public school. As we come to county commissioners, we come to county managers, as we're tracking those numbers, enrollment's going down. We all know the story is the same across the state, across the nation. But all the resources that you've been able to provide to us, that's how we're trying to make the best to make sure to provide extra to our students because they can't, and I'm sorry, the state is not fun, is not funding us with all this extra that you saw that we're trying to provide to all our students. We are really excited about the partnership with county commissioners, but we want our community really to believe in us, to come along with us. We're going to make DPS and the entire community better for all our students.
Great, great. Thank you. Commissioner Carter.
I have so many thoughts about this and so many feelings, honestly. I guess I want to just start by saying that, you know, I really want to thank our colleagues on the Board of Education for doing, probably making some of the hardest decisions that have had to be made related to policy by any local governing body in a long time. I mean, this is a generational decision and, you know, it's going to affect two of my own generations. My, my, my children all went to Durham Public Schools and now they're having children who are also going to go to Durham Public Schools. So it definitely is a generational decision. And it, it, your, your presentation and all the elements of your Growing Together plan are incredibly thoughtful and based on, you know, theory and research, but it's also filled with so much heart. I mean, I, I felt like as you were describing the, your, your goals, everything you're trying to balance, your hopes, offerings. I, I could feel adrenaline coursing through my body with excitement, but, but it also touched me in some sort of way. It just, it feels, you know, heartwarming perhaps is the right word. I think you used that name, Sheena. I also want to say that I thought, you know, Brenda, your questions were right on. How do we ensure that this program with its goals and the boundaries drawn the way they were to achieve our diversity goals and our, our enrollment goals? How do we know they're going to work? Why do we think they will with neighborhoods that are not racially diverse? Why would we think our schools are going to be racially diverse? Well, all of your mechanisms for trying to ensure diversity and your drawing of the assignment boundaries to try to ensure diversity will not work unless families make the choices in our community that honor their progressive values that are always espoused by people in Durham and, and they choose to attend public schools because they're awesome schools and also because there is this element of the common good that really matters. And, and Durham families need to embrace that and accept that responsibility. It is one that we are not allowed to, to, to shirk. So I, I really do implore all the families of Durham. It's, I want to just say though, white families, you know, we know that the demographics for our school district do not reflect the diversity of Durham. And it's mostly because white families and middle-class families are not choosing to go to our schools. And so that needs to change. And I believe that this Growing Together program is one that should be so enticing. And working together, let's hope we can really achieve all the goals that you've set out to achieve. And I believe your plan is so solid and, and thank you all again for doing this really hard work.
If I look at the play side without going back and forth, I, I will miss people, I guess. Excuse me. Of course now. Not that I'm speaking. I just want to make a couple of points. I want to say, I just want to say what a great, awesome Growing Together team we have. I'm very proud of their work and it's been an honor to see it over the course of this past year. And I wanted to say I really appreciate the comments from Commissioner Burns and Vice Chair Jacobs about the need for some, or the competitiveness in attracting students to the schools. And, and we have an awesome marketing and communications team. I, I just wanted to lift up this one slide that, on implications and community benefits, the diversity, growth, access, equity points here. It's a really nice graphic and I think this will, to me, this is what will increasingly become our brand with strong academics at the center. And, and so that's what, you know, I think we're really going to see as this, as this plan rolls out. The other thing I just wanted to lift up was that this is all about, you know, choice. Obviously we, we saw the numbers of like lottery seats that were desired versus the ones that we have currently. But also about that strengthening of neighborhood-based schools with consistency across them, but attention to the unique communities that we have in Durham. So just wanted to lift that up as well, that I, I don't want to lose sight of, you know, even though we're increasing access to these different programs, that also, I'm so proud of this program for, for strengthening the schools in their communities and, and just really giving more opportunity within those neighborhood schools.
I only had a few comments and then after hearing everybody else, I just, so much more that I just wanted to touch on so many things that you all have said. Thank you for asking the hard questions. Those are the questions we asked Chair, Chair Howerton along the process in the four years of gaining bits and pieces of this plan. I've been working with Mr. Palmer and Dr. Danner that began in 2016 when dealing with priority zones in a school of choice. And the administration team has just been working so hard to really uplift the values that we hold. It's just incredible. So again, even here in this presentation, like we've gotten bits and pieces. You all just got a fire hose or drinking from the fire hose with all that you just received. But Dr. Pittman, you did such a good job in keeping it concise and to the points and making it easily digestible. I don't know if it's because I've heard the presentation in different parts along the way, but there was something special about today's presentation and the, the sentiments shared by everyone on this panel right now. To, to touch on a few points, the greatest exodus from Durham Public Schools The greatest exodus from Durham Public Schools in looking at racial demographics is black families. That's been trending for the past five years. And we need to be clear, what has been consistent is about fifteen to seventeen percent of white families consistently across. So, to your point, Commissioner Carter, yes, people and their progressive values need to choose Durham Public Schools because of all that we have to offer. And they can hear these things, and that creates our racial diversity. But our team has been intentional for diversity that affects across very different ranges, socioeconomic diversity, access and intentionality to program diversity for choice for families. So, I just, I just wanna put that out there and just be clear, too. There needs to be exposure about these vouchers and what's happening at these charter and private schools. We need to look at the disaggregated data. Y'all call for our disaggregated data? Call for the disaggregated data within those charter schools, within those private schools. And not only will you see that DPS is most likely doing better in a lot of these standards, but also thinking about the emotional toll that it takes on a child to be in a minority in the school system. Durham Public Schools is eighty percent black and brown. That's it. So, there's, there's support, there's an ability for our kids to be seen. And as y'all drink from the fire hose today, I just wanna leave y'all with a few highlights as you're going to champion Durham Public Schools. I like this slide. This is our brand, diversity, growth, access, and equity. That resonates with us. What folks in the community wanna hear? We, every school has STEM in arts. Every school has STEM in arts. We have access to dual-language, Montessori, and year-round. If you lead with those programs, that's what parents wanna hear about. And then, we have online courses through Ignite. We have our CTE courses, and we have early college opportunities. What more can you ask for? What other programs are there out there? So, again, there's intentionality to access that our administration has brought to us with the urging of this board, and there's equity. There's a menu of options in DPS. I have a rising, next year, I will have a rising high school student and a rising middle school student. Those are my younger two. And I don't know what school to send them to, because there are so many choices. Do they go to a IB, a Shepherd Middle School? Do they go to a year-round, which I've always loved, my year-round schools? And, or early college? I have a high schooler in tenth grade right now, early college, having an amazing experience. There are so many choices to choose from in Durham Public Schools. We need a state budget to help us better recruit and retain our educators and our staff. Our educators cannot afford to live in Durham. We need a plan for our educators to be able to live here, work, live, play where they, where they're working. We appreciate our county commissioners for our teacher supplements. Esther Funding has supported DPS, but we need more from the state. I know I'm preaching to the choir. Our legislators were here on yesterday, speaking to these matters in particular. But we are rebuilding. We need these things in place so that we can offer excellent customer service and understanding that all of our schools offer academic rigor and safety. There's access to every school for academic rigor and safety for all of Durham Public School children. And DPS has to be a first choice. I have no questions. I just want to champion the work that's being done and give you all some good talk points. That's what I ask from our marketing team. Let us know what the talk points are that we can go and expound. And actually, I don't know that I even need them at this point. STEM, arts, there's access for every school. Montessori, year-round. I know you're rushing me. And dual-language in there. DPS, the first choice.
I wanna thank our administration for all the hard work. I know that so many conversations you've had with us, sometimes together, sometimes individually. Dr. Pittman, I thank you for your availability as well. I'm very grateful for Growing Together, the plan. You know, just my support, and I've had to tease out a little bit of my advocacy in the piece of, you know, when it came for School for Creative Studies. I just have to uplift that, that it's not just throwing out the entire plan, but just the advocacy of hearing from students who are, some who are food insecure, and the meaning of having a year-round option, especially for high school students who are vulnerable, some of them whom are neurodivergent. And just told me, like, you know, their primary meals come from our schools. And for a school like School for Creative Studies, I mean, access to food, access to adults that are trusted, trusted adults. I've been hearing a lot of that with my work with youth, how important it is to have people in the building that they know, like, you know, look out for them. Coach Barnes came to the board and advocated, you know, for his students. There's a lot of mentorship that is happening in our schools. And so, I, you know, I, I made sure to talk to our admins, because I value their work, and they know how much I value their work. Dr. Stacy Stewart, my goodness, you know? I, I don't know, every single week, it just seems like there's, you know, a whole lot that our administration is tasked to do, and things that they're, they're doing. They're building the ship, and they're also triaging, you know, so many different situations. And that is really Durham. I mean, Durham has complex challenges. You know, we're facing gun violence. We're facing, you know, and this is not glorifying gun violence. This is something we're sad about. And, and not lifting it up means, you know, we're, we're, we don't wanna look the other way. We wanna be able to get ahead of this. And so, Growing Together, the equity in Growing Together is definitely going to help us through providing a global outlook. And I can't tell you how life-changing it is to have a global outlook. When I was a Durham Public School student in the IB program, I graduated with an IB diploma, as well as, you know, my high school diploma. But having the kind of coursework that I knew was graded not by teachers here in Durham, my coursework was sent across the world. And there was somebody else on the other line who was grading my history papers, who was grading my, even, even when it came to like the music. You know, it was, it was meaningful, and Mr. Kason was my, 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 my teacher at Hillside. And I remember, like, we, we were, I was nervous. My tapes were gonna be sent across the world to another country, because the IB program has standards that are throughout the world, right? And so, there's a whole lot of partnership where teachers are looking at some of the materials. So, some of Durham's best work is gonna go out into other countries with other teachers. That is something that ultimately excited me as, as a young person in Durham Public Schools. And that opportunity to continue to invest in that program and the elementary school options, because one of the things is that with an IB program, if students came in, currently, we just had middle and high, they don't really get to taste of that. When you start with elementary school, just knowing, you know, that this is the whole pipeline. It kinda builds a whole pipeline, not just for IB, not just for the IB program, that actually in the high school component has theory of knowledge and kind of explores philosophy and so many other things. For other programs as well, we have pipelines, and I really loved how many of you uplifted the pipelines. The pipeline from DPS, Durham Tech, NCCU, those pipelines are so important. We've had so many conversations, including talking to a young lady right now who graduated, who's going into my alma mater, North Carolina Central University, coming in as a sophomore. And because she came in as a sophomore because of these credits, right? The credits that, you know, the advanced placement, and also just our ability to have that, that option of, of coming in. She's coming in as a sophomore, and she's doing the three-plus-four program. The three-plus-four program at NCCU means three years at NCCU in any of these tracks, whether it's medicine or veterinary programs or dental. So, there's three different health tracks. And then, there's already an assured four-year program, like Rutgers University is a partner for folks who wanna be orthodontists or dentists or any, any dental programs. There's Boston College that already has the medical piece. So, we, there's already a three-plus-four program, and we can continue to, we don't have the slide just showing how many of our DPS students are going into NCCU and actually are able to, in seven years, because of the, you know, the ability to come in as sophomores, because of the credits they're getting, do a full career that would've taken them longer and do that in a three-plus-four program. So, I just wanna uplift that as well and just thanks, thank our administration and thank all of you for, for the work. But food access, we're dealing with a lot with our students. You know, year-round schools, I'm, I'm encouraged that every five years we're gonna be looking at this program so that we might, okay, I'm looking at y'all, bring back the high school, the year-round high school option at some point. But the plans are, are definitely well thought of, and I understand that we are gaining much more than we're even losing at this point. And that's been my communication with families who, you know, for, you know, understandable reasons are feeling that they might've lost something, but we're getting so much more. Thank you.
I'm just gonna make it really quick. Thank you to our team. It's a great presentation. I wanna say that the school board has been getting presentations probably for the last two years, and community engagement started in 2020. And you've had over a hundred different community engagement and probably more, virtual and also spending time in every school. And with all that community engagement, it started with history. We talked about the history of, of merging of the city and the county schools. We know that some families probably still didn't hear it. And so, really ask that you all really continue to kinda be champions for this work. I think there will be some tough transition in 24, 25, as families are trying new elementary schools as their boundaries have shifted. And I just appreciate what y'all shared earlier and continue to share that in the next coming years, 'cause I think the transition will be challenging. But I think if we stand together really strong, families will hear from our government, from other families who want to champion our public school system. And I think we also have ambassadors who've been working with our Office of Public Affairs. So, if you know people who want, you want to connect, please do, so they can help kinda share this. We know that families talk to other families, and that's how they hear information. And so, we can connect you with our Office of Public Affairs, so they can have the information to be sharing with folks.
So, this has been a really, really rich conversation. Can you make quick? We're gonna run out of time.
Yes, I just wanted to respond to Chair Umstead. I'm, I'm volunteering right here to be a storyteller. And I think we, we have a lot of storytellers right here on our board. People, many of us are Durham Public School parents, students. And I think another story that we need to tell in the middle of this picture is that we have the best teachers in the world in Durham Public Schools. And, and, and that's really important. I am very proud to say that my son is going to start being, starting his student teaching at Jordan High School next week. And he's living in the teach house with two other people, and one of them is the daughter of the principal at Little River. She just graduated from A&amp;T, and she's, they're both in the Duke Masters of Arts Teaching Program. So, we're growing our own, and I think it's also important that we tell those stories as well. I know that at least two of the other teachers at Jordan were also, grew up with him. One of them won Teacher of the Year last year. So, telling the stories of, of like this are really important. So, thank you. I, I will sign up, Chair Umstead.
We got you signed up, Wendy. This is such a rich conversation, and we so appreciate you being here and having this conversation with us. The, and, and not just having this conversation, but the work that you've done before you got here. This has been awesome. The, one of the things I wanna lift up, if anybody sends me an email at a Yahoo address, I will not get it. It's dead. I will, I, it's been over two years ago that it was hacked. I will not receive Yahoo emails. So, you don't get a response back, 'cause I don't know you sent it. So, one of the things that the Chair of DPS and I talked about is in our next meeting, we talked about, because all of this stuff around education, the programs like this that's coming up forward in C, there's a lot of things that we're doing that's all interrelated. So, we talked about it on, for our next meeting, rather than having it just for the elected, that we do a community event. And I put it out at our meeting, talked to staff about it, to DP, to the county staff that was gonna talk with DPS, that maybe we, I have not talked to JB at Durham Tech. But in order to have the parents in that conversation, we need to have it in the afternoons so that, 'cause there's so much of this is interrelated, that our parents mostly don't know what's going on. And how do they connect all of this stuff that we're putting out? All the stuff that DPS is involved in and Durham Tech is connecting with? So, I'd like to hear from, and you don't, we don't have to talk about it today, but I'd like to know what the board, school board, think about doing that for our next meeting so that the community can hear some of this conversation. Okay, are you, oh, you coming for the next presentation? Okay, okay. So, so let us know, Chair Umstead, what you think. Because I just think that this conversation needs to be broader than just us at this table. The, the other thing that we've got on the agenda is the back-to-school update. We've got, I think we've got what? We've got about ten minutes? We've got about ten minutes. How much time you need for your presentation? Okay. And then, we have a, a written report from, from Linda Chappell. I, I think we're gonna have to just get the report, otherwise we'll end up going over today. So, if you wanna go ahead and introduce yourselves with your presentation.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Stacy Stewart, Chief of Schools.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Alviro Lestane, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
And we would like to begin by welcoming back all of our students who are currently located in nine of our schools. We have our five year-round schools that began on July 17th, and we have our four specialty high schools that began on August 3rd. We are currently enrolling over four hundred, I'm sorry, four thousand. I'm speaking it into existence, okay? That's what we're gonna do. Over four thousand students enrolled. I would just like to highlight four areas of focus currently. Summer bridge, projected enrollment, community engagement, and professional development. With that, we decided to do something different this year. Instead of offering K high, through high school offerings for summer learning, we focused on our transition grades, kindergarten, sixth grade, and ninth grade. As you can see here, there were three days of learning for students in kindergarten, four for the sixth and the ninth graders. Our kindergartners are ready. We were very intentional in terms of bringing their parents along to say, "These are the things that we have to offer at Durham Public Schools. We want to invite you in to be partners with us as we educate your children." We are projected to have thirty-one thousand forty-four students enrolled this year. And we are committed to engaging all persons in our community at the school level, district level, and specifically in the department level. I'd like to take this moment to highlight our EL Prep and Family Academy. We are geared to ensure that our families are welcome. As you can see here, this year, we are going to offer the second year of EL Prep and Family Academy. You have the dates from September through February. Sign-up began last Saturday. We welcome families to continue to enroll their students online. And at the end of the day, we are all growing together. We have to ensure that our teachers are growing together. This year, we had over seventeen hundred and twenty-one teachers participate in our splash offerings. And this was a plethora of best research strategies, sessions offered to our staff. We are really focused on improving the quality and the growth of our exceptional children programs by being intentional this summer, training our teachers as well as our school administrators. And our schools have been very intentional with bringing teachers into their buildings prior to, to go ahead and create the culture that academics and learning begins with our teachers.
And I will take a few minutes just to offer a human capital review. We are working diligently as a district to not only fill positions, but to make sure we fill them with the best qualified candidates, not only across the nation, but across the world. And we'll talk a little more about that in a minute. We are all aware of the post-pandemic human capital challenges that most industries are facing, but we have some things to celebrate within Durham Public Schools. So, I would like for you to look quickly at this slide, and I'm gonna give you some additional context. This time last year, we were sitting at two hundred and forty-nine teacher vacancies. This year, I know on this slide, 'cause we had to turn in materials, it's sitting at one forty-two, but we've come down about twenty-some plus more since I've submitted materials. So, our numbers are ticking in the right direction, even though we continue to have to address vacancy, I mean, resignations and those sorts of things. to address vacancy, I mean resignations and those sorts of things. For our other positions, we have 108 vacancies. Last year, we had 115. So you can see a total, we are down significantly, sitting at about 250 vacancies. It is less than that now. We have our specialty areas that we look into with EC teachers, 41 vacancies. EC instructional assistants, about 25. Math and science are hard to recruit areas. Each of those, we have about a dozen vacancies. And then we have our bus drivers and our monitors. Even watching the news this morning, we can hear about the school district struggling to find bus drivers. To be fully staffed, we need 68 more bus drivers. We need seven bus monitors. But I do want to put those in context. For teachers, we have about 2,443 teachers. So that means our vacancy rate, if we use the numbers upon submission of these materials, is sitting at about 5.8%. If you look overall for all of our employees, we are sitting at a vacancy rate of about 4.9%. That is down significantly from last year and it's going to continue to go down. For our, we currently have 157 bus drivers. So even though we have those 68 vacancies, all of our routes are covered. But this is to make it the most ideal so that we do not have students that have extremely long bus routes and employees that are having to drive multiple routes in order to ensure our students will get to school. But we are set to make sure that all of our students can make it to school on a bus and get home on a bus if they choose. I want to cover very quickly, especially with our time, just some of our initiatives that have worked for us to bring down that number of vacancies and our ongoing efforts. I'm probably going to spend the most time on Grow Your Own in the interest of time and incentives, but I'm glad to answer any questions you may have. We have our TA to teacher program in partnership with NCCU, that it was an inaugural program in 2019. We have 14 current teachers in the district who have all remained, that have matriculated through that program. And we have 42 candidates currently, currently in various stages within that program. We are also excited to announce with our Dream Program in partnership with UNC Chapel Hill, we have four current MAT residents who will be serving with us for three years. And in our new cohort coming in, we have 11 candidates that will be working in our elementary and high schools. Bull City Teaching Scholars, I hope to come back to bring you more information about that, but that will launch in '23, '24. We look to have our first cohort. We will be running that application process in the fall. You will also see information on our university and community partnerships. We've been to over 30 job fairs, but it's not just about attending job fairs, it's about building relationships with those various universities so that we can have access to candidates, have, build relationship with candidates. And so we thank Dr. Mbinga for supporting us in those efforts and we've been able to establish some good relationships there. As far as bonus and incentives, we know that we're in a day and time where numerous bonuses are being offered. And we don't just look at bonuses in isolation, we know it's part of establishing that relationship as well as being competitive within a market where we have people giving bonuses all around us. So we have EC signing bonuses, referral bonuses, math and science bonuses. We have transportation bonuses as well as other incentives related to that home ownership, making sure that there's affordable housing options for our employees. In the interest of time, I want to come here and just share some basic information with you. One of the ongoing greatest challenges we have in securing the teachers we need is related to licensure in North Carolina. So I have some definitions. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but what you can see from this slide are just a couple of things. As far as the individuals who went to college for an education program and completed it to serve for, with the intention of starting an education, that would be your continuing professional license as well as some of your initial folks. And then our international faculty come to us with experience. I want you to think about the fact that now, if we look at those individuals minus the international faculty, that's 68% of our workforce. So that's where I want to go here and just say, one of the things that we are keeping our eye on, just in the span of three years, our number of teachers in residency has gone from 80 to 137. That's a 71.25% increase. And I say that not to say that those aren't outstanding teachers, because they are. And they're doing a fabulous job. But the mentoring, the training, the capacity to be able to make them the best teacher they could possibly be looks different than those who come through traditional pathways. So I just want to point that out because that's one of our biggest areas of advocacy that we seek with the state to assist us with making North Carolina more attractive as a destination.
So I have a question for you.
Yes.
For this committee. I hate you having to rush through your presentation because what, our teachers are so important. They're so important. And I feel like you're rushing through this. I want to ask the committee, do they mind staying a little bit later? I'll have to jet. I've got 11 o'clock Zoom call, but if you guys, if you don't mind, allow them to take their time and do their presentation. Wendy, you'll take over.
Okay, great. So thank you so much. I hate having to do this, but duty calls. And thank you so much. Okay, all right.
I would say that is the gist of the overview. I think I was able to capture the key points that I wanted to make. I am glad to entertain any questions and we have one other piece of the presentation.
Let's finish the presentation and we can do questions at the end.
And there was a request to give an update on the New Northern. And we have Mr. Frederick Davis, Frederick without the E.
We have a quick, greetings again. We have a quick, I say infomercial, but this was on the news explaining the excitement about Northern High School. So we just want to play that for you and then I'll give you a quick rundown of where we are.
Hi Joel, yeah, I'm standing in the New Northern High School that will welcome back hundreds of students in just a few weeks.
This is exciting as you see the grandness of this, the pride in the Northern Knights to really have a true new home.
Frederick Davis is Senior Executive Director of Building Services for Durham Public Schools. He's a proud DPS graduate and architect who showed me around. One of the first spaces he showed me was the bakery and culinary arts classroom.
But you can also look in and see the students in just three weeks cooking some delicious and nutritious meals. And we put a special emphasis on our culinary arts department here, which is an award-winning program.
You're looking at a $90 million project that's over 200,000 square feet.
Grand staircase. Yep.
It includes 82 classrooms and common areas like this. A multi-purpose space that serves as a cafeteria during school hours and media center constructed to meet students' learning needs. Even the mock-up floor plan of how this room will look is still on the walls.
It's really almost like a small community college. As we know that students learn with diverse abilities now. And so we made sure that the design captured those many facets of student education.
This new location is just two miles up the road from the old Northern High School. Officials haven't decided what to do with that space yet, but teachers like Lauren Castine say there's excitement building among her peers.
Really excited to not have to worry about the facility and be able to actually get down to the meat of teaching.
The new school comes with an outdoor football stadium, something the old school didn't have. The district has also worked with NC DOT to add sidewalks, crosswalks, and two stoplights to ensure school safety.
Our kids are already great. Our faculty are already great. I'm excited to see how much greater they can be with these tools.
And it's still an active construction site with workers working around the clock to pull this thing off before the first day of school. I'm told construction should be complete by then, August 28th. Will C. Joel, back to you.
No pressure, Fred.
So, thank you. And so.
But I see it every day in my chair.
I'll give you an update. We're working around the clock. And I like to use analogies to help people understand the building environment. It's almost like buying a new house. So there will be some blue tape, but that doesn't mean that the students won't be safe and won't be in an inviting state-of-the-art facility. Some of the areas that we will be, still continue to improve are some of our off-site road improvements, which have no real impact to the building itself. And so there are many people who, along the main corridor of Roxborough Street, can see some of the active off-site road improvements. But however, as you meandered through to the front door, I assure you that this will be a school for 2,000-plus students with culinary arts, RTC, a various amount of CTE training. And we're going to be proud of this school. And I'm excited as a former Durham Public School student to be able to give students a real inviting learning environment.
I want to add one piece also, just to say Lauren Castine, who was featured in this, is also our coordinator for Bull City Teaching Scholars. So she is actually working on an education pathway to make sure that we kind of have that Grow Your Own even from our middle and our high schools.
Thank you Commissioner for funding this particular school. And I think we have a ribbon-cutting date already. Shina Cooper, do you know the date? September 14th. So Commissioner, you should be receiving an invite for that particular event. Thank you.
Thank y'all for the presentation. Dr. Lassane, can I ask you just to highlight our partnership with Self-Help Credit Union around the affordable housing? That's something that our bodies have talked about together and I just would love if you could highlight that information.
Yes, so just to give a highlight, we are so excited about our partnership with Self-Help. We have recently sent out communication to all of our employees that gives them an opportunity at housing and, name? South Square. Thank you. South Square Townhomes, it just escaped me. Where we actually have a preference for if our employees meet the requirements, they can secure housing, any available housing that is there in South Square. We are also working with them. We're excited about that opportunity, especially with the number of new employees that we have coming into Durham Public Schools and the expense that it takes to be able to live within Durham. So we are grateful to Self-Help for that opportunity, but they took it even farther. It is not just about the housing at South Square. We are working on a whole educational piece that could help lead our employees to home ownership. And so we want to be able to provide as many of those options as possible for our employees and look for great partners in that work.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. And then Commissioner Burns.
Thank you. So much great information being shared today. First of all, I would love to get more information about this partnership with Self-Help. This sounds fantastic. And I had heard they had bought the apartments across from South Square, so, I mean, South Point. So that is fantastic. Two things. One is the grown in Durham, I just want to make sure to emphasize because I know about it because my son's in it, which is the partnership with Duke. He would not be becoming a Durham Public School teacher without it. He's benefiting from a fellowship and it is requiring him to teach in Durham Public Schools for two years. Also, he's receiving subsidized rent as a part of, you know, the teach house. So one of my questions is just, you know, what is the current status of that partnership with Duke? Because they're, they are providing the tuition subsidy and subsidy, they are directly paying for the rent for their two duplexes and that's supporting at least 12 student teachers, but also first-year teachers. So wondering how can we expand that partnership with Duke and perhaps, you know, other, other partners as well? I think it's a great model because also the student teachers are getting a lot of support. So that was my one, one question. And the second is for a future meeting. Dr. Mbinga, I would love, and I know I sound like a broken record, but in the future, I know the next meeting, we're going to focus on education to workforce, but I would love to hear what is going to be the process for assessing the land, the reuse of the land and the buildings at Northern? So that's, that's, I'd like to hear at a future meeting.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and respond to the first one. Duke Teach House, I have a meeting with the person responsible on my calendar and the plan is to take my cabinets to go visit some of those places as well. The last time I went there was probably five years when I came in and I met with one of the vice provost of Duke University, was able to get me in touch with that person. So we have a meeting coming up. We're trying to see how we can scale it up.
And let me just add, it's, I would say it's the tuition part and also the housing. So it would be great for Duke to expand that support for Durham Public School teachers.
Thank you. I think I did not respond to the second one, Northern High School. So next time we'll make sure that our initial plan that we have for that particular facility, we'll be able to bring to you. But again, we still have more conversation with our board, what's going to be the best use for that facility. But eventually, we're going to come to you.
Commissioner Burns.
Mine is really quick because I also have a hard stop. I've stayed a little bit over. I have been monitoring. One, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the recruitment. Let me at least start and say that. You know, turning the corner on that is, is huge. We're going to have better outcomes with more teachers, with better teachers. But I do want to pivot to Self-Help. So I, when I saw the purchase, it's about 232 to three bedrooms. Is there a set aside for teachers? I know you said if they qualify, so I know there's going to be some kind of programmatic process to get in. But of those 230 units, and I imagine, well, is there a set aside? Like how many units are available for Durham Public School teachers? If that's been set up?
I think with Self-Help's requirements, they can't just say these, this number are reserved for Durham Public Schools, but it is based, it's income-based.
Right.
And so our employees reach out directly to them and we're going to meet with them to gather some stats. And so I know immediately when we sent it out, like within the first 24 hours, we already had a dozen respondents.
Right.
Who could see the criteria, had assessed that they met the criteria and were already reaching out to Self-Help. But as far as a hardcore number, that this is how many we're setting aside for Durham Public Schools, not a hardcore number, but a precedent in assessing them for the actually being there. There's a flag that denotes them as a DPS employee.
I mean, that's helpful because you do have, well, back in the day, right now, this housing, let me not say anything about housing, I'm not trying to make the news like the city officials. 10, 15 years ago, you know, when they, when people were building starter homes, you don't even see starter homes now in Durham, which is ridiculous. When you were building starter homes, they said, okay, oh, you're a Durham Public School teacher, $3,000 off. You're a, you work as a police officer, $3,000. Because they wanted teachers and police like in, and you don't see that as, it would be $10,000, it would be something like that, I'm $110,000 all home. So I'm always looking at what type of partnerships, but if that could be solidified, I don't know what your attorney will say. I know that this was a lot of work. I know before, I remember I did have a conversation with Emily about it for like two hot seconds. I would just be interested to see in a year what that looks like and how many were able to get in. And then how we can possibly replicate that because there are bodies not focused on this issue and I think the two bodies sitting around this table are.
All right, there are no other questions or concerns? We do, comments? Sorry, Ms. Valuardo.
Just wanted to shout out the presentation. I'm excited about the teacher housing and everything, but I wanted to just note the screenshot. but I wanted to just note the screenshots of some of these posts. That just shows so much joy. And the EL Prep Academy, families are so excited. You know, they're really grateful for those opportunities. When we take a proactive approach to look at our data, you know, disaggregate the data and see where we're hurting the most, right? And I said this at the last board meeting, I've said it a couple of times. The work of equity is the work of continuous improvement. So it's like we continue to improve, and we continue to look at the data, look at where, you know, the subgroups, and continue to figure out, what do we need to lift them up? And I am just so inspired by the leadership that DPS has right now. The leadership that continues to work and build and continues to just grow out and set the expectation. Our families are watching that. So I just want to thank Dr. Stewart. I want to thank Dr. Lassane, Dr. Mubenga, and Dr. Pittman, and all our admins who are here for the continuous work that they're doing to make sure that equity is centered in all our work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valdades. And thank you, staff, for this presentation. Yesterday, I had opportunity to sit on a panel in our new teacher orientation, and it was incredible to see a super diverse group of teachers. Men, there were women, there were folks across different racial backgrounds. Durham Public Schools graduates were in the room. Like, it was an incredible room to sit into. And Dr. Kelvin Bullock and his team really led a great day, starting off with equity. The first thing they did was equity one-on-one training at the new teacher orientation yesterday. So thank y'all again for all your hard work, and we're looking forward to a really great start to the traditional school year. The next item on our agenda was just a pre-K update from Dr. Chappell. Thank you for being here. Did anyone have any quick questions on that? All right. I'm gonna move us next to public comment. Do we have any, no public comment? All right with that, we are adjourned. Thank y'all so much.